Good evening. This is Monday, March 26th. This is a meeting of Athens City Council. Tonight, we are meeting in committees. And we start off the evening with a public hearing for our proposal, proposed Community Development Block Grant. We will have, after this public hearing, we'll talk about committees that are meeting. And I have a few announcements to make, but we'll let Mayor Wild begin with his public hearing.
Okay. This is a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDVG. This is a formula grant for the Small Cities Program. It's a federally funded program. We are required to do two public hearings in the process. Let me read a little background and then we'll go from there. And it's take public input on the projects. Community Development Block Grant Program is a flexible program that provides communities with resources to address wide range of unique community development needs. Let's see, beginning in 1974, the program was one of the longest continuous running programs from HUD. It, program provides annual grants on a formula basis to 1,209 general units of local government states. Eligible activities, community receiving CDVG funds, I'm going to say can use the funds for many kinds of community development activities, including but not limited to acquisition of property for public purposes, construction, reconstruction of streets, water sewer facilities, neighborhood centers, recreation facilities, and other public works. Demolition, rehabilitation of public and private buildings, public services, planning activities. Assistance to nonprofit entities for community development activities. Assistance to private and for-profit entities to carry out economic development activities. The funding for this year is approximately $97,000. Normally, a percentage must go to housing, equal housing programs. In the past, we've used it for infrastructure improvements. Last set included, let's see. I know we've done some of the work at Arts Westport. We've done some of work on Mill Street, a streetscape that was done on Court Street many years ago. We did it piece by piece there. Really, the point is to get input of what has, what areas can be done, what we want to spend the money on. Some of the restrictions, of course, there are some restrictions. We've tried looking at trying to improve some of our own facilities for housing, and we can't do it. Some of the breakdown actually has to do with the low and moderate income census numbers, but pretty much most of Athens falls into that range, so it's not that critical. But there are limitations for it. So I'll take public comment if you have any. And the other thing I would ask is anybody who's come in late, please sign our sign-in sheet so we know that the public was here. That's you two guys, too, yes. We'll put you on the spot. So, any public comment? If not, I can add some more. I do want to add something else, too, if need be.
I'm just wondering, since I haven't studied this, it's Ron Lou's, 15 West Hills Drive. I'm just wondering, can any portion of this money be used for taking the next step on the Armory, getting it more ready for future development?
I don't know. I assume it could be possibly. We could check into that. It hasn't been brought up in the past, but that doesn't mean it can't be done.
Okay. I just think that's something we need to keep our eye on as part of this community.
And again, I think the Armory repairs is, would take a lot more than the, but at the same time, I'm aware of the fact that we have used it just as a supplement. One of the poles right now is kicking around in my administration is to add it to the Issue One money and pursue rebuilding of Columbus Road in the Lancaster area. But again, it'll be a lot more than the $70,000 change we usually end up with for that project. Also, the Issue One money usually runs about $400,000. In both cases, even combining would not be enough to cover everything that needs to be done on Columbus Road. But that's one of the things we're kicking around and thinking about, if we can pair all the grants together. But as I say, the Armory is, I know we need more work on it to stabilize it even better. So that's a good point. I'll put that in my notation there.
If I may, we've been rather successful with bundling different pots of money together to do infrastructure improvement projects. As you know, that water line that comes down Lancaster Street breaks and breaks and breaks. We're missing it to do much in terms of repaving the roadway until we repair that infrastructure. So this is a request from the city engineer to consider bundling the CDVG, similar to what we have done in the past with an Issue One, and then going forward with that project next year. And the Armory may prove complicated, as it were, because as you know, I have been unable to secure public funds to renovate our Richland Avenue house to have lower moderate income.
They said that was not possible to do, I'm told.
Correct.
Okay. See, that's it. It says we could do these things, but when you start getting down to nitty-gritty, often it's like, well, wait a second. The only way we could actually do that house, fix the house on Richland, this is right next to Station Two, and bring it in, we want to bring it up to scale so we could actually use it for, we're basically homeless in that sense, or for metropolitan housing to use for low and moderate income. The only way we could actually do that is actually by turning, beating it over to metropolitan housing, which is not what we want to do, because that house has really been purchased many years ago with the intent that we ever need to expand Station Two, we'd have that possibility. So you can see there's little quirks in this. We, you know, the blanket, we can do this, we can do that, it gets limited real quick when we start getting to the, you know, details. And really, Richland and Lanca, Columbus Road and Lancaster, we require also sidewalk improvements, as well, as you know, the sidewalks are almost flush with the street on North Lancaster.
Bike lanes, I mean, it would just be a general improvement in the area. And it would indeed fall within the OMI requirements of this grant.
But we're up to other suggestions. We will have another public hearing. I do not have the date yet for that, but there will be one. And you'll get another chance to take in, we'll get another chance to take input.
Just something that the Service Safety Director just said. This is money that we're looking at for 2013, not anything that would happen this year. So we're looking at future projects.
Yes. Nothing else, I guess. Close it down.
We'll close this public hearing. Couple announcements, actually three announcements. This week, Thursday, March 29th, from noon till 1:30, President McDavis is hosting a luncheon for Athens City Council. This is a kind of a turnabout thing of Athens. The city council hosted President Davis, Mick Davis, for a luncheon last year, so it's his turn to invite us. So it's happening this Thursday at 12, from 12 to 1:30, President's Dining Room, which is on the fourth floor of Baker Center. If you don't know where that is, ask at the information desk or any of the people walking around, they'll be able to tell you where it is. This is an open meeting, by the way, so we often see members of the press at this meeting. Another event that's coming up is April 7th, is our annual street tour. Athens, the Public Works Director puts together a proposed list of streets that he sees that need work, whether it be complete repaving or some other work done. And so he kind of takes us on a tour of the street, of the streets that he is looking at. Again, if we, as council members, have anything in particular that we want to look at as a group, maybe the Grosvenor Street Slip or any, whatever it might be, please let either Director Stone or Debbie Walker know. Again, this is an open meeting, so members of the press and/or citizens are allowed to, are invited to come. Please just let us know that you want to do this. This time, please go through Debbie Walker, our broker counsel, so that we can make sure that we have adequate transportation for everyone who wants to go.
Jim, what time?
The bus leaves at 8:30.
So we're asking that everybody be here by 8:00. The bus will leave at 8:30, with or without you. And the third announcement is for council members. Reminder, your financial disclosure filing forms are due April 16th, so we have a few weeks to get those in. Most of us probably turned them in shortly after the campaign, but if you haven't, you've got a few weeks left to turn those in. And that's it with announcements. We have three committees that are going to be meeting tonight. We'll start off with Finance and Personnel Committee, then we'll go on to Planning and Development Committee, and finally, a committee of the whole, which will be probably the shortest of them all. So we're going to begin with Finance and Personnel, chaired by Member Isley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have several items tonight. One to deal with the water system improvement, another one, a recommendation on obligations that we have for finances for later this year, and then also a presentation by the Perfection Group. And as you might recall, this was a project with a city that was originally about $425,000, of which we borrowed $300,000. And this was to make improvements to the city facilities, the buildings, windows, fans, and a variety of other things in our different buildings, at the community center, at the city building here, and also at the Code Office. And as I understand, we have some updates on that tonight and some additional information, so we'd like to welcome you and ask you to come up and, I think you can speak, right at the table here, I think we'll be fine. And we also have Assistant Service Safety Director Ron Lucas, who is very involved with the project. He's here to provide some additional information for us.
Is the mic on? My name is John Albrecht, and I'm with Perfection. This is Rick Anderson. I didn't get to meet you all back when we went to start this process. It's hard to believe that it's actually been two years since the first RFP package went out. But what we have today, the project, is, I would say, 98% finished. I mean, we're going to call it, as far as the energy part goes, completed April 1st. And we have some punch list items, some programming, some VFDs, and a few little things that we need to finish or work with Ron. And we met with him to get that final list and finish that up. And then I'd like to just share with you that we have a book here that, we had made two copies, one for Perfection and one, one for you all. And this is an energy, like a closeout book. And this, when we turned in the RFP, and some people were here then, and maybe some were not, but the big book was really big. It had 22 buildings that we started looking at, and lots of calculations and pricing. And this book represents everything you actually did purchase for the $425,000. It's got all the, it's got a copy of the contract again, all the calculations, any before and after readings, everything is in this book as a project closeout. And there's a few highlights, just what we did do. We did lighting, we ended up working in four buildings. We did lighting in the community center, the Code Office, and the parking garage. And then most of the work was in the community center, but we did do a couple windows here at City Hall. And then we did some, a little bit of controls at the Code Office with the lighting there, and we did pretty many windows there. And then the, the, most of the work was at the community center. We had a large lighting project, some retro commissioning, where we go through equipment that isn't old, doesn't need to be replaced. We upgraded and cleaned it up, and we did a control system there. We integrated into your existing honeywell controls. We did do a new chiller there and some other VFDs. We did do water conservation as well. So the whole package was about $425,000 and had about an eight and a half year payback. So this book, we both have a copy of the book, and then Perfection will come back and take a look at the energy bills and do a comparison throughout the year. So again, from Perfection, Perfection's a family-owned company. We actually, last year, celebrated our 60th year. It was started by my grandfather, 1951, one of the owners of my dad and my brother. So we're very thankful for your commitment to energy conservation and very appreciative of this, the Phase One. Rick is going to talk about some things that we had in the big book, so potential for Phase Two. But I would like to present to, to council, an award from Perfection, and I'll read it here in a second. And some people put this in various places. It has come with like a little stand, so you can stand it up, but sometimes they'll put it in a trophy case. I'm not sure exactly what you would have, but Perfection Group would like to present to council the Perfection Energy Commitment Award, an award of excellence presented to the city of Athens for your commitment to energy conservation in 2011. I'm going to present this to you. Where do you want it? Stand it up here, maybe somewhere?
President?
Right here, is that going to be all right?
I promise not to.
And this is, it's kind of cool. This is an award we get from a company in Columbus, and that's made out of recycled glass. I think it might be Little King's Bob's, I'm not sure. So, thank you again for your commitment to energy conservation. And if you have any questions on this, Phase One, let me know, or we can work through Ron to get any of your questions you might have answered.
I'll have the book in my office if anybody wants to come look at it.
I just wanted to point out that you made mention of an eight and a half year payback. What we, what we as council did was, was choose projects that we thought would give us a return of that money, projects that would save energy, as you alluded. So that's what we're looking at with, with these projects, not just replacing windows because they didn't look nice, but they were, they were bleeding heat and cooling through them, so.
And oftentimes, the way we, we present in the big book is each project has a price and a rebate. If the rebate is AEP, you did get $16,000, $17,000 in rebate money back. And what we, what we do is try to get the payback that are best, like the lighting and controls, and then sometimes you'll package in something like the chiller. The chiller at the community center is a big energy user, but it doesn't have a great payback just on its own. But you can package things together and get things done that you need to get done along with things that save energy as well. Not that the chiller saved money, but it's so expensive, it's not as good of a payback. So that's what's nice about packaging things together, which you guys, you did that. You grabbed the lighting and you grabbed some key buildings, I think, for visual, you know, like the community center's a big building where a lot of people go. So it's nice to have, and we put the display in there, so it's nice to see the visual aspect and your commitment to green.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to, since I'm doing council, have all these changes been implemented?
Are they already done?
Yeah, we're like at 90, we're almost done. We're just doing a few punch list items. So yeah, we owe him some extra light bulbs and we have, the VFDs are in, we have to do the final programming, a few little things like that. So yes, they are done.
One last thing, is there any, I don't know, I'm looking for, finally for a word, need to maybe take that document, turn it into a PDF file and put it online so we could all peruse at the same time if we'd so desired?
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Can you do that, or do you want me to?
It seems like it'd be a good thing to do and.
You can send it electronically.
Conservatory.
Sure, I'll just, what I typically, some, when we turned in our RFP book, we.
Yeah, the RFP we have as a PDF file.
Yeah, what I usually do is just do each section as a separate PDF scan, and I put it together in one big document, one big PDF.
Right.
And I don't know if I can email it. Oh, worst case is we'll either, we'll mail out a CD or we'll do some, we're all coming, next time I'm out, I'll get it out here.
Okay.
Because sometimes when those are big, those big scans bounce back.
Right.
Try to email them.
Good idea. Member Paul?
I think that this program is, we've, as council, we've been very enthusiastic about it. And I would also maybe like to have you put your input on how we can, when we do a next building, make it energy efficient. It strikes me that the most modern building that we have had to have the most energy upgrades. So, the community center. So it would be nice to have access to information or grants when we maybe do the Armory or do other projects in Athens.
And Rick has a packet that has some of the original present, I'm not sure if you were here back when we came back a couple years ago, but we do have some information for a potential Phase Two. And you can just give us some guidance as to exactly how you want to see that. We can do whatever you'd like. And in some parts, we talked about, we utilized, we have, Perfection doesn't do windows. We're a mechanical contractor, but we don't do like windows or plumbing, so we try to use your guys if we can and.
And some local contractors as well to stimulate the local economy when we possibly can. I've got, unless there's any more questions on Phase One, I've got packets.
Thank you.
While you're handing those out, I'll ask a question on the first phase. Do we have an estimate on the amount of energy saved per year or the long-term cost savings to the city from that part of?
Yes, it's in, it's in this book. Yeah, and it's got all the cash flows and everything is in this book. So when they scan it, I'll make sure I scan it, I can do it tomorrow. And then if it's not too big of an email, I might be, or I might be able to break them down and email them to you. Do you know if your server wants to stuff back?
At least an executive summary or some.
Yeah, well, there is a cover letter in here, but it doesn't have the, you want, for all the energy saved, we'll have to get to the cash machine. And it has how much, because we know a lot of people are interested in the green effects, so like the last page, there has the environmental, how much CO2 has been reduced, all that. That is in, let me just see, because that's like this last page here. Total cooling hours saved were 414,000. Natural gas was 3622 CCF. And then environmental CO2 reduction, this is yearly, all these are yearly, 694,000 pounds of CO2 reduced, which equates to removing 57.7 cars off the road. So that's on this last page here in Section Three.
I'm sorry, what was the middle figure again, the CCF?
The CO2 reduced is 694,000.
And the one before that?
The one before that was CCF of gas is 3,622.
Cubic feet of gas.
Yeah, hundreds of cubic feet of gas. Cars removed are 57.7, and that's the equivalent, they, sometimes the EPA also gives it like acres of forest added, you know, because forest removes CO2. So that number is 71.6 acres of forest added. And it shows you how these calculations come about. I might look them up, so, but sometimes the numbers are different a little bit, depending where you go to look at them, but they're close. You know, these came from the US EPA calculator page that we typically use. So you guys have done great, you know, and I agree with you, you know, the Phase Two, that's, it's almost a trick of packaging things that you need to do, you know, like a chiller, with things that save a lot of money, like lights. And you do have a lot, we have lighting, like every building. So we looked at 22 buildings, and we really only touched four. So the one thing that is a little against us is that AEP is ending the T-12 rebate, they say, July 1st, because you're no longer allowed to make T-12s. This year, I believe. So they're basically saying, why are we incentivizing people to buy something that pretty soon they're not going to be able to buy anyways? So the T-12 phase out is happening, and the rebates are, and we do a lot, I mean, we, we did about $700,000 in lighting up at Dennison, so we're really pretty good friends with the AEP folks and know the people, KEMA, that runs that program for them. And we got Dennison a lot of money back. And so we, we always try to get as much as we can in these programs. So that is, they say that July 1st, the T-12 rebates will be going away.
Real quick on the packets that I handed out to you. There's, on the left-hand side, there's an article about, an Energy Star article about performance contracting. And what this thing talks about, especially if you go to page seven, I'll let you read through this when you have nothing else better to do, but page seven talks about the cost of delay. And you can actually calculate out by not doing these energy projects, how much you're wasting. If we would have implemented the whole project, let's say, you probably could have saved substantially more money, but again, we understand why you did Phase One politically, and some buildings that were a lot more high-profile than others. But on Phase Two, again, remember, this is an energy and operational savings project and also an infrastructure improvement project as well. So again, we talked about this, this power of the bundle, but when you bundle in those low-hanging fruit items that we talked about, which are the lighting, controls, and those type of things, those help pay for a control system in a, in a building, help pay for a boiler in a building, help pay for some major air conditioning improvements, which we talked about for this building. Right now, you've got a bunch of window, window shakers, as we call them, hanging out of some of the windows. Not real efficient sometimes, because sometimes you, in some of the buildings you walk into, you got heat going and you also have the air conditioning system going. So what, what this system is going to allow you to do in this building in particular is to put in a central system that's going to allow you to control that much better. But that low-hanging fruit, which is all this lighting that John talked about, is going to help you pay for some of those longer payback items, but the things that you need to do. So again, that Energy Star article talks about that. On the right-hand side is our original presentation that we made to you guys two years ago. So we were picked, we did RFP, we were chosen by, by the city to actually implement the projects. And that's the actual presentation that we gave, so I'm not going to go through everything with you, because I know you guys got a lot of other things to do tonight. But that's the original presentation that we made with all the pertinent information. And then in the back of that is a matrix of projects that could potentially be done. What we do here is we create kind of a matrix for you with all the costs and all the savings. And you guys, like we talk about, this is the city of Athens's project, it's not Perfection's. So whatever you guys pick out of there that you deem are projects that you really want to get done, we just kind of plug and play and we find a side. We went through a couple exercises with Ron, I think we were back three or four times to kind of figure out exactly what we wanted to do. But on Phase Two, that you guys still have a substantial amount of infrastructure improvements that need to be made and also energy savings in there.
One thing I do want to just point out, just to keep it simple, those prices, the matrix, all that, that was done two years ago. So if you choose, whatever you choose, and we can work with you guys, with Ron, Paula, we would go back and make sure the prices are good, we would need to make, I mean, if we're, if we're going to wait past July, we need to find out other rebates there. They, they change constantly, the rebates, the amounts, so we would want to get some updated information on all that. But I mean, typically, the price increases aren't that much. So I mean, what you have gets you in the ballpark. But once we know where you want to focus, we would read, we would refresh everything, because it is two years old.
The bottom line is the quicker you get moving on this, the faster you guys can start saving some money, so, which is the bottom line.
And again, when they talk about return on investment, the money we should be making back in about eight years, the lifespan, if I remember, Phase One was like 16 or, or they, everything.
If you had done everything, it would have been like, I think it was 14 and some change. And that's, that's detailed on the, on the actual information that I gave you, but I think it was 1.3 or something like that, and the payback was about 14 years, something like that.
So what you're seeing there is that we can pick and choose what we want. The packet you just passed out has a, as it says, a matrix, a grid on it. And the last one, of course, page of it shows the 22 different buildings and projects to go through. Of course, three of them would be eliminated, the parking garage, community center, and I believe Code were the ones we did the major work on. We did very minor work on City Hall at the time. Constraints, of course, that have to do with historical preservation on the City Hall. We've got, I think, air handles on the first two, second and third floor. We've got radiators on the first floor and air conditioners. So, and again, some of the things with you, when we were looking at this two years ago, some return on investments will be 150 years, but that's the idea. They don't, they need to be replaced, they can be replaced, but they're not going to make a lot of money back, so you pick and choose what you want. I don't know what else to add to that. You want to add anything, Ron?
Yeah, the major, the major thing about doing these projects is you can come up, you need a board replacement, you need an air conditioner replacement. Do you guys have? Do you guys have that money sitting in a pot? Most probably not. So, that's why it's combining this with all these energy conservation items. It helps pay, it helps pay for those infrastructure improvements. And again, takes it out over a fairly long period of time.
And because of the way the legislation is structured, it doesn't, it doesn't add to our debt load, because it's off the books, so to speak. So, it's being repaid. It's basically built.
It's being repaid in energy and operational savings on a yearly basis. That's the spirit of the legislation.
Okay. Well, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do want to credit Allah who did a lot of work on this. I think the first time this came through is the legislation for the Perfection Group with the Environmental Committee. And I would see this, you know, being a cooperative, it's not only a financial commitment, but also one that would come through service safety and looking at the environmental issues and how we're making for greener buildings in the community. So, probably a joint effort on prioritizing which of these projects we might move forward with. But Ron, we'll look to you for direction and leadership on this. So, we thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Second agenda item has to do with the water system improvement project. And Councilmember Butler and myself have some information to present on this. Just by way of background on our earlier ordinances, this year, we had Ordinance 3012 that authorized a Service Safety Director to submit an application to the water supply revolving loan account. And then we have an ordinance currently moving through with Councilmember Butler that had its second reading last week and authorizes the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids for construction and construction engineering of this project. And Councilmember Butler, I know you have some of the details on what these actual water improvements are. It might be helpful to go through that again.
Thank you, Member Nadsley. Yeah, I can add just a few more points. And we've been discussing this, as Member Nadsley alluded to, for a number of different committee meetings and regular sessions. So, this again, as a reminder to folks, is a replacement of 1950s-era cast iron water lines within three designated areas of the city. These three proposed areas include Ransom, McGuffey and Harris. Area Two is Joneswood Terrace and Riverview. And Area Three is West Union Street. As a friendly reminder again, too, this is the addition of 17 new total fire hydrants as well as over 8,000 feet of water line. In our meeting with the Public Works Director, we were discussing some of the details regarding this and the financial end. I think this project we're looking at is estimated over a million dollars and is definitely well-needed. There will be some construction engineering with in-house work. Is that correct?
No, not really. I think that we'll do the construction of...
Oh, I see what you're saying. When they get to construction design, it's out of house, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
I think the Public Works Director mentioned maybe 15,000 in-house.
And so, what we're doing now tonight is mainly the purpose to provide an update for you, that we are moving forward with those bids and that we will need a separate piece of legislation and separate, an ordinance, once we have the, once we obtain the bid and apply for the loan. We'll need a new ordinance to appropriate the money for the project.
And that ordinance will require suspension and emergency clause. Eligible to apply for the money.
Right. But so we can move forward with all due speed, once we do have the loan application approved and the construction and engineering design. So, there isn't any delay. We would need that. Okay. Thank you. All right. The last item that I have tonight is a recommendation from the Auditor's Office. And I believe some of you have received, if not all of you, have received an information that there will be several city, excuse me, city employees who will be retiring this year. And there will be a payout to some of these people for unused vacation, sick leave, comp time. And the Auditor's suggestion is, is that we appropriate the money that will be needed for the retirement payouts this year totaling approximately $100,000. And the purpose of appropriating it now is, is that that then says that those funds, $100,000, is intended for that retirement payout. So, we aren't under the impression that we have $100,000 that we don't really have to spend, other than on payouts. So, that's just our recommendation. And if no problems with that, I will, we will proceed with an appropriate issue ordinance for that.
Two other pieces, Ms. Lanis. If you remember that the meeting we had with Kathy was transferring some money from the, looking at the Tourism Fund, which is running out of money. We pay the Economic Development Council as well as the Athens Tourism Visitors Bureau. In the past, we've been throwing 50% into Tourism and 50% into the General Fund, but we've been paying out almost 70% to entities. So, we'll have to, I think the conversation was this could be done internally, but Kathy felt that it should be done by ordinance or at least somewhere in aware as for policy from Council.
Correct. And I appreciate you bringing that up. I do feel that the Finance Committee, we would like to discuss that a little bit more.
No problem.
So, that we, so that we fully, the Finance Committee fully understands the implications of that and before proceeding with it.
Okay. The other one I have is some grant money. I received an email from Deputy Auditor Ray Hazlitt. He says, "We received notice from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation Correction that we must repay $12,350 on our CCA grants." CCA grants are...
Community Corrections?
Community Corrections Act. And so, this is for grants for the fiscal year '09, '10 and '11. Please consider request during our committee meeting tonight to be presented, passed under suspension next week, as we will be slightly past the April 1st deadline for repayment. I left copies of information with the Clerk of Council. So, again, I guess it's, I'm not sure how it works in terms of reimbursement on that. If I'm looking at the unappropriated balance for that, I believe it's Fund Line 235. We have about $35,000 unappropriated in there. So, that will have to, I'll have to, as I say, this is I got today, so I want to dig down into it, but I think we need to move on it.
Okay.
And that's why I mentioned it. Did you get...
Councilmember Paul?
Why are they requesting this payback?
I do not know. Maybe they did their calculation, decided that we, they gave us too much, for all I know. I do not know why.
I did inquire the Deputy Auditor, and we are assuming that they do a three-year audit, because these are for '09, '10 and '11. And from that audit, it was discovered that that's the amount. It's not something our office governs.
Councilmember Pappy?
So, they don't tell you why they overpaid you, or why we?
Again, it's not something that the mayor's office, in terms of overseas, so I'd have to go down downstairs.
And I imagine we can find additional answers out to it. It's not, it does happen from time to time that, you know, reports might have been submitted to the grant or a final report, you know, has a later balance indicated, and then there's money due back to the funding agency. It's not totally unheard of. Yes, Councilmember...
It just sounds like it makes common sense to find out why they want...
And I don't...
I just hate to get a letter in the mail and say, "Please send me a check for $12,000 bucks. Don't ask me why."
I'm sure that our Auditor's Office will help us get to the answer of why we'd be doing it. Yeah, we wouldn't do it by best memory.
Well, at least it looks like we're on the ball and we're not going to take it.
Right.
You just can't send us letters and ask for money.
Well, this is grant money, I believe, so we could always just say, "We're not going to take any of the grant whatsoever," but I'm not sure the court would like it that much.
We'll get some answers.
Thank you for the update on that. Okay. And we'll look forward to hearing more of the story. We'll look forward to that. At least some answers for it. Any other agenda items for finance and personnel? If not, we're finished.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the Planning and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Paul.
The first thing we're going to cover is the former, formerly gas company property, the annexation of it. And I would like to introduce Michael. Come on up. Come on down. You can sit at the table or... And this has been before Council several times, and we are now kind of narrowing down what we're doing, right? So, the idea is that we want to annex, the city and the property owners want to annex this piece of property, which we can all see is a little belly button of non-annexed property in the city of Athens. And there's several benefits to annexing this property. I mean, the property gets city water, city sewer. It's a great development site for economic development. And so, the property owners and Michael, who is representing him, has a interesting way of making everybody happy, more or less, in the annexation process. So, can you explain your annexation process? It's not just a, we are going to annex it and everything on the day of the annexation. Usually, on the day of the annexation, all the property value and the property taxes go to the city. And nothing goes to the township. So...
Would you?
Hi.
Well, for those who are not aware, there is a state law that's involved in annexation, which is a step-down program of how taxes are to be distributed continually to the township as well as to start to be distributed to the, to the city. One of the issues we ran into is when we approached the township was that they had been losing real estate properties within their region over the last probably 15 years, selling them worth quite a bit of money. And they were seeing a decrease in their potential revenue or income. So, what we tried to do was to say, "Yeah, we understand you're losing money, but if this piece of property is moved into the city, the value of that piece of property is going to go up, because it will be of more value, because it immediately have available two of them, whoever develops that property, water and sewer." Without those two utilities, it's pretty much undevelopable property at that point, because EPA is not going to allow us to go in and say, "We're going to put sewage treatment plant on that piece of property and then develop it into 60,000 square foot of office space," for example. And so, we said, "Yeah, we realize you're losing money, but on the other hand, if we can get this property into the city, have a plan of how utilities would be provided by the city, it will develop quicker, therefore increase the amount of value of that property quicker, therefore potentially over the length, which I think is about a 15-year period, that piece of property under the state step-down payment process..." Or was it eight? It's been so long since I did this that...
Five years.
But the process is over like a...
You've asked for eight, is what you're saying.
Yeah, exactly, over five years. But I think the percentages do extend out a little bit further than five years then. But it gets greatly reduced then. And I probably should have reviewed that since this letter was written, you know, a year ago at that point. But the fact of the matter was that if we can develop that piece of property in a quicker process, the township actually will make much, much more money than they're presently making on a blank piece of property that is, you know, not valued very much then. And so, to help us along in that process, then we came up with the idea, why don't we delay the taxes for the step-down process with the state law by agreement between the city and the township by saying, "Hey, you know, we won't ask for any money over the next three years or once development happens." Then once development happens, that piece of property will increase in value at a very quick rate then, and everyone will benefit from that then. So, that's kind of the reason I proposed this particular process to occur then, was to make the township feel a little more warm towards what we were trying to do, as well as to hopefully move the property along a little quicker, because it is 15 acres that could be within the city of Athens in an area that has good potential for development in that particular area itself then. So, that's kind of why we came up with it then.
I want to point out that the township trustees could not stop annexation.
Correct.
So, you are doing this out of a better citizenship, happy heart.
I guess I feel good, kind of.
Yes, I feel good.
We're not even family.
Yes. Which I think that is commendable on one level. However, the city does have certain liabilities and certain responsibilities once the property gets annexed, and that is fire and police. How do you propose to deal with that?
What we had put in the letter was that if, for example, about the only thing that could burn on that piece of property would be a grass fire, and therefore the city would be called out to put a grass fire out, someone threw a cigarette into the grass as they were going down the bike path or something like that. The owners would at that point then reimburse the city for their time there to put the fire out at that point. The same would be on police if there was, you know, whatever could occur on that property based on illegal activities and stuff, that there would be a reimbursement to the city for that then.
Okay. So, how, if development occurs, let's say, next year, because the economy is growing and we're all...
Yeah, we're usually a couple of years behind the economy.
But how does that affect the tax benefits of the city?
For example, someone who would come to the owners there or into our office and say, "You know, we would really like to build, you know, 40,000 square foot of space on that particular site," then once we would start that process and get a building permit where there would be value added, then the tax would change to the step-down process that the state has then. So, once those, that process develops and utilities are put to the side or footers are dug or something like that, then this agreement would disappear at that point and it would start the process. The value then is, the value of the land is going to greatly go up and therefore everyone's going to benefit from it.
And how does the, how does this agreement affect the city schools and the tax?
Actually, it doesn't affect city schools at all, because it's the same pot of money where the, because of where it's located, it's still Athens city schools. Therefore, they're either getting money here or money there. To them, where the benefit is, is if we start this process a couple of years quicker, because we've annexed it in, we're all ready to go with utilities, they would hopefully see an increase in property taxes with that then, and therefore benefit also then. So, if anyone here has got a rich uncle who's thinking of developing in Athens, have him give me a call.
Two questions. So, we had a draft letter earlier in the year, and that called for continuing to receive the real, that the Canaan Township would continue to receive the real estate taxes for five years rather than two. So, my question, just from the Finance Committee perspective, is how much revenue then, my notes say that we would potentially say the approximately $5,000 in taxes, that's listed as an example, that what would happen would be that the city would not see 30% of that $5,000. So, about $1,500 a year is what is proposed, that we would not have as income from that.
There was an attachment, I think it was sent to everyone here, which shows the normal revised code and then the extended sunset plan that were proposed, showing a five-year, eight-year, and the, was, which I think was also the case for the city, was like $1,500 on that. So, it wasn't a great amount of money. You know, for what we're trying to do of having a piece of property that is developable out there on the market... out there on the market, we waste that kind of money. In the city, we're trying to find a company or corporation or a high-tech business to come into Athens to create jobs, you'd spend greater amounts of money of marketing that site by not having utilities and if you do have it, by getting this process moving forward. So I would argue in fact, yes, the city is losing money, but on the other hand, it's going to greater gain in the long term with it then.
And are there, do we know if there are any prospects for developing that at this point?
There have been several different types of developments. We have talked about, one is doing, on the one five-acre tract, doing a 60,000 square foot building. The key of that is finding the right kind of user to be able to go to the bank and say, we've developed, or we have this lease in hand with this particular group, therefore once you start building that building, it will quickly fill up for the balance of what's going on in that particular area. So it's a matter of getting that first user, and if you've got the system in place where it's been annexed, you're going to have an easier time of finding that first user who will make that commitment. Because if someone says, yeah, I'm interested, but I need to be in here in nine months, and we go through this process now with the city, I'm going to say it's, that's not possible, it's not doable. On the other hand, if I know it's annexed in, I know the city's ready to go with a plan for utilities, then I can say, yeah, that's something, I can bring the right kind of contractors in and the right kind of people to put it together that we could develop it quicker. That's one thing we're looking at. The other option is whether or not there is room for more housing. At this point, there isn't in the marketplace in Athens with what's happened over the last five years, so housing is probably pretty much set for the next five years with that. So housing is probably another op, not another option on that particular site. And then there's some discussion of another user on that site, but because of the nature of that user, I can't divulge it at this point. It would be a great user for that site, let me put it that way. It's not like we're bringing in a factory or something like that that's going to create headaches, but this would be very much of value to the city as well as the town, the county as a whole. But it's also something that's very secretive of what that might be. And I have heard nothing from the owners probably the last six months on that, but I do know they've hired a consultant to study it to see if it's doable for what they're talking about then. And so they are and have been investing in that site already with possible users with it then. So we're trying to work it from our side so that if they do land that particular user, it will happen a lot quicker than if we wait and not do this.
Speaking of development, I'm curious because I don't really know, but is the site, is it, is it development-ready? I mean, I know it sits in the floodplain, so therefore, is there, are there some major things that need to take place before this even goes through?
Actually, with what was prepared and approved by the city for the new flood ordinance that I think is now, what, two years old at this point? We actually looked at this site and used this site as an example of how the new ordinance would affect the site so that we would know, you know, that we weren't creating a situation where that site would not be marketable. And that particular site with what's going on, with what you would need parking, actually about a third of that site is already out of the height elevation of the 100-year front that's been set by the city already. So the balance of the site would end up being probably parking areas for retaining of water from parking lots, in other words, dry ponds and those kind of things then. So it is a good developable site based on that.
So there wouldn't have to be any fill taking place as you say?
Actually, it would, all kind of fill would occur on the site, so it averages out, so it meets the flood ordinance requirement then.
The other question I had was with development, in reading this document, I'm just kind of curious again, with the fire and policing responsibility of the city, what it says once development is taking place, is it when development is complete, then we would take over those responsibilities or as soon as the ground is broken?
Once you're annexed into the city, you are responsible for that, but if the site's undeveloped, those are just, would be paid to the, to the city by the owner for whatever needs would be. And a prime example with that I could see would be a fire on the site from a grass fire from an extremely dry summer or something that would have to be put out. And therefore, that cost of putting that fire out would be reimbursed to the city for that. But once we would kick into development, then that agreement of fire protection and police protection would no longer exist because then we would start the process of taxes for the city, therefore they're getting, what they should be getting for taxes, therefore the expense of police and fire no longer is reimbursed because you're getting taxes.
So it's not complete with development, it's as soon as ground is broken, that development beginning, that that takes.
That's right.
Thank you. It'd be great, I think, to see this property developed, and I think it makes sense, especially looking at the map, to include it as part of the city. The problem I have with the process here and that I've had since this was first introduced is, it seems like a relatively small amount of money for either the township or the city. The way that the agreement that is being proposed is written. But it seems like it's really complicated and that it would set a precedent for future annexations in the city in which we might be stuck in a situation where we're expected to negotiate with all the surrounding townships whenever we seek to annex a piece of property. And so it's not been customary, I don't think, in the city as far as I know, to have this type of an agreement in place. And I'm wondering why with this specific piece of property, it's necessary, you believe, to move forward?
By the time we started the process, I was in hopes of moving the process through quicker by using a mechanism like this so that development would occur quicker and not being, you know, two people standing there and saying, that's my money, no, that's my money, and arguing over what I thought was a minimal amount of money compared to what, you know, we could get the development to occur. Correct, I mean, you can naturally, we can say, under the law, say, this is what you're doing, this is annexed, and, you know, tough Canaan Township, you're, you know, the law's the law and we're using that. And I was trying to, as she said, be the nice guy to move it forward that way. And I think basically, it's a item-for-item, you know, discussion on whether another project would have the same kind of value and the same kind of potential of doing it then. And I know you've had other issues on other developments outside the city where you've had issues which mostly that time occurred with water requirements being supplied on that. This one, because water is not supplied at that site at this point, I don't believe. I think the water was, probably there's a water tap there with the city. Probably is, I don't know.
Sewer is going to be your greatest challenge.
Yeah, and we have to get, hopefully we can convince a budding property owner that would be to their interest to provide uneasement on the back of the property, which is not developable land anyhow to be able to run the sewer, to handle not only our property but the Roselli property, which is the next piece up. And so doing this and moving this forward not only develops our 15 acres, but there's an additional 15 acres beyond us. If someone knows, which is annexed into the city, but if someone were to know that there is 30 acres there, you know, very conceivably it could be a much larger development, although Roselli's piece has larger issues with being in the floodplain, but when you still combine the two pieces together as a marketable piece of property, it is there for that purpose then. And one would say, if the economy's turning around, there is potential of larger developments that could occur because we have this all set up, the mechanism here with it. And I know that the MSK property as well as Roselli property have been talking together. They have a realtor involved in marketing both of those pieces together then.
And so I guess as a follow-up, if we went forward without this agreement, what would slow down the annexation process? You mentioned timing was one of the reasons to put this together.
Well, we were just trying to get the township to sign off on it quicker instead of taking it through legal actions to get them to sign off on it. And let's face it, you know, for $1,500, it seemed a lot more practical to do it that way than spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars with attorneys in court arguing back and forth, you know, about it even though we know what the outcome is. It just seems like a lot of wasted time on the public sector and government to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Noel, why do you think they would take it to court? Have they said that out loud or?
They've, you know, they've been kind of with their feet dug in, and the only way you get out of that is, you know, say, we're taking this, and they would fire something against it even though they wouldn't lose, you know. Why go that route? You don't know for sure, they may be bluffing then, but, you know, it's only $1,500, why even take the chance on bluffing, move the project forward?
And this has been discussed now for several years.
We're now two years into it, which, you know, I wanted a year ago to be able to say, hey, we're into the city, let's really move this thing. And so to get it now, and now it may still take readings and stuff, we're still probably six months to seven months to.
Easily, yeah.
Huh?
Easily, yes.
Yeah. With you guys blessing on this, so we're still that far out, and if we put another situ, we could be a year or greater out there. So, you know, and we don't want to miss that potential of, you know, coming into the market where development's occurring then with the economy, so.
Any other questions? I think that I'd like to go ahead with this. I think that last year when we heard this, I think that we would like to go ahead with it. This has been something that's been on the boiler. One thing I would like to say is that the Canaan Township trustees should realize that they are being afforded excellent opportunity. They have not necessarily been team players in a lot of things that we've done in the past, and so I think that this is a hands-out to them to be able to play ball, play together in the future. And I think that, I appreciate that you're doing this with being able to work together with the city, work together with township, and I'd like to see it go forward with expedience. So what we need to do now is look at whether the county has released land?
No, as far as I know, I think our first step is us to supply the services, tell the county to do that with this agreement in place.
Well, the county has to release land before we.
No, I think we have to touch, say, we're going to provide services, then they release land, then we accept the land. I think that's how it works. We can always, the landscape of annexation is always changing, so we should check with the law director on that.
And it's going, it may change more because there's some sort of amorphous bill up at Columbus right now, yes.
And again, this is, as you say, it's not necessarily, it's a courtesy.
It's, I strenuously say it's a courtesy to the Canaan Township trustees.
And I believe the city audit has weighed in that this is a loss of money and revenue.
Yes.
Not a lot, but every little bit counts as, as the auditor will acknowledge that every little bit counts.
So maybe the next time we ask something by the Canaan people, they will say, yes, so.
Be neighborly?
Neighborly sort of thing, yes, that would be good.
Okay.
We have had problems with them in the past, so.
There is a desire to bring this into the city limits. There is a need for, this is, this would probably end up to be manufacturing, there's a need for manufacturing B3 zones. There was a study done in 2008 for industrial park on April 1. Everything I hear from the Economic Development Council is the search for a nice chunk of like 40,000 to 50,000 square feet, preferably new and preferably someplace.
I agree, I think that this is an excellent economic development opportunity and position within the town could be, you know, accessed by our bus system, bike system, I think it's great.
And the highway, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll see what has to be done next, but as far as I know, it's really us first saying, we'll provide services, we will provide this agreement.
Right.
And structure, I believe. But I'll have to check on the actual methods of process.
So basically, the township has to sign off on it and the county has to sign off. And then, and we have to, does it have to go before the planning commission for zoning?
That's a good question, I forget, I think so. I know you actually have a designation eventually, but I have your recommendation.
Maybe if that needs to happen, maybe we can start that at the same time.
We'll polish up our annexation procedures to find out what has to be done.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next we have a brief discussion about the wellhead protection plan. Last time we brought this before the committee was the recommended changes to the wellhead protection plan. There were some questions about what needed to be reviewed by the law director. The law director has now reviewed the wellhead protection plan, and we are ready to present the revisions. From my reading is that there aren't very many revisions. Basically, we can't say anything about banning natural gas, petroleum extraction or fracking because that is covered by the state exemption law. So the law director said that we can't have section 16 and 17 in the wellhead protection plan. However, there are other parts of the wellhead protection plan that will cover many of the impacts that these operations and exploration and extraction will have on the natural, on our wellhead area. The other change, major change, was that injection wells, the, they wanted to put class one, two, three, four, five, six injection wells will be banned, and they just changed it to all injection wells. So no matter what type of injection wells, those will be banned from the wellhead protection plan, wellhead protection area.
I think she just did.
Is that a basic thrust of?
I believe so. Did you get in the addition of the disposal, manufacturing, processing, or recycling, and we're going to add or disposal of regulated substances? And the law director felt that that encompasses, and he views that more as a clarification.
That's under definitions four?
I'm sorry, it was under the prohibitions.
Prohibitions, okay.
And then definitions.
1090105, prohibitions, okay.
And in the definitions, we are allowed to keep the EPA definition of injection wells, so.
So we are changing prohibitions number four, manufacturing, processing, recycling, and adding disposal, which strengthens it quite a bit. Good. So unfortunately, in my view, we can't add 16 or 17, but the preemption at the state level ties our hands quite a bit, which is unfortunate for people who always say they want local control and local authority, that the state ties our hands to this degree. However, that's how it is.
We are still waiting on a response. Mike Cooper of the wellhead protection team is waiting on a response from the permitting office of ODNR that states surely you have to protect a drinking water source, and hopefully we'll have that response.
One would hope so. You would think that the regulations at the state level would say upfront that any permit that comes in for a regulated wellhead protection area would automatically be denied. Yes. So one would hope that our state would regulate it at that level, so.
There's a lot of conversation out there about whether or not federal law oversees this, and apparently in this whole discussion, that is a very sticky point. And so most of us believe that federal law supersedes or oversees state law, but in this particular situation, legal counsel is saying, no, that the state is doing that. I don't know whether I agree with that, and I don't know whether we as a council want to move forward and just say what we believe. to move forward and just say what we believe and whether we want to do that. But again, from the point of view as a city and our budget and all those kinds of things, we would be definitely stepping right out there and putting ourselves in a situation. So in terms of looking at our legislation and everything that's been reviewed, we're looking at every possible angle and way to protect ourselves in light of what Columbus is telling us.
I mean, I don't want to speak for the law director, but he was clear that he is not, he's just stating that if we leave 16 and 17 in, it's viewed as non-defensible. Counsel, of course, can choose to take one action. So he's trying to give us the best legal guidance through this, you know, revision.
And if people remember what 16 and 17, it's very specific drilling, mining, exploration, and extraction operations. That's 16. 17 is storage and/or disposal of wastewater and other byproducts, et cetera.
These are prohibited language.
Prohibited.
Prohibited in the wellhead.
But again, if we go back to what our existing is and just adding that clarifying word, "our disposal of," we feel that that.
Covers that.
Covers that. It's been in existence long before we ever heard of fracking.
Right. Which I think is more defensible than putting in a specific, two specific sections. I think that there's something, if something is already in it and we've been doing it for years, then that's much more defensible.
I just want to go on record. I think council should leave 16 and 17 in. And let's see where the chips fall. I mean, part of our duty as city council is to protect our water system and water supply. And that's what we're doing. And if the state says, "Well, you can't do it," well, that's why we have courts. Let the courts decide one way or the other. I mean, we've had crazy frivolous lawsuits before. Never stopped us. I say, "Leave it in." I'm going to strip it out.
I'm with Member Rosner here. I don't see any reason to take it out if it comes to it and the state tells us that it's not something that will protect us. We can, without cost, we can get rid of it. Or, you know, maybe if the city does feel as a collective at that point to try to test it a little bit and see if, see if there may be some room there. Of course, New York is under different laws, but they have two cities who currently have zoning that bans drilling within their city limits, and that has been upheld by two courts in the state of New York through home rule, which is a legal, would possibly apply in this case as well in terms of, as you said, our duty to protect our water supply. And so I'm also in favor of perhaps adding the changes that were discussed to the wording in the other section. But I don't see a compelling reason to leave this 16 and 17 out.
My question would be back to the law director again and whether that sets us up for a precedent of possible lawsuits.
Well, he's already said.
In the expense.
And I could respond to that. I'd say, "Okay."
I would, from the financial perspective, I would say.
Yes, it's going to cost money. Yes, no question about it. But what are we here for?
But what are we here for is also to strengthen the laws that we have on the books.
And we are.
Also, the New York laws are great. And more power to those communities in New York. However, New York Supreme Court does, has zero, zero pay in Ohio. There is, the preemption law that our illustrious legislature passed two years ago about this whole thing tied our hands really tightly about doing things about permitting, location, and spacing of wells, of the operation of oil and gas wells. And I don't like it. I do not like it. And I think that one thing that we have done is to, instead of getting in the face of the state and causing a fight that we don't need to do right now because there's probably other fights that we can do in the future, the manufacturing, processing, and recycling, and disposal of regulated substance in our wellhead protection plan is, covers, covers that. So I think from my understanding and legal precedents and stuff, if you have a law that's been there, the protection plan has been in place for however many years, and we have this, you know, Section 4 that says manufacturing, processing, recycling of regulated substance adds the principal activity, it's been in there. And that is a much stronger legal precedence than if we go and fly in the face of the state with 16 and 17. And I would love to, you know, everybody knows me. I love to fly in the face of people. You know, I'd just say, "Let's ban it all." However, we have to be smart. We have to be legally smart, and we have to be strategic. So I would suggest in this situation that 16 and 17 on legal counsel of our law director be not included in this particular Title 39 update. To tell you the truth, we are looking at injection wells, which is probably the higher probability of us being, having people come in and do in the city. We are, you know, we are banning those. And so I think that being more strategic than in-your-face, which is really, you talk to my kids, it's really ironic about me.
Well, I would also add that, again, we protected ourselves many years ago with the foresight of having a wellhead protection plan. So we are steps ahead of many communities north of us who are experiencing some significant changes in their communities that don't have wellhead protection. So again, we have an EPA, you know, years ago, people went through this whole process and got this all set up, and it was approved by the EPA. And I would believe, and I tend to side more with Chris on this, that we have protections here that many communities don't. And the language, this is not a one piece of paper. This is a long ordinance and a long plan, and there's a lot of wording in here that I believe covers a lot of these issues. And we have expanded the whole injection well to be the whole scope of injection wells. So.
So that's our two cents. Do you have something to add, Paula? You are on the committee.
I am. I am. The team feels just as passionate, if I may say, to all of council members is what I've heard this evening in terms of protecting our water source. And we struggle with the same issue that you're struggling with in terms of tempering what is legally defensible with what we'd like to see in there. I still feel comfortable, and the law director has indicated, he can defend the ordinance as it exists now. He can defend it with these proposed changes, with the exception of those two line items. So even if it's a step forward at this moment, we can perhaps come back and include that. And ultimately, we're hopeful that the chief permitting officer at ODNR will state, "Of course, we would never permit something like that in a wellhead protection area."
And I'd like to point out, if the wellhead protection plan was brought to court, we have the potential to have the whole thing thrown out. If, so there are, it's legally defensible, and we want the whole, that's an important thing. We don't want a lot of the important stuff that we have done over the years to be negated by a court ruling. So.
Two things. One, I think the proposals that don't include 16, 17 are stronger than what we have now. I think what we have now is strong, as Paula's saying. We have a good ordinance. It's enforced with great dedication by Mr. Cooper and the county, City County Health Department. On the last bit in terms of the whole ordinance being invalidated, I don't think that's true. There's a severability clause at the end of it that says if any part is invalidated, then the other provisions should remain in effect. So I don't see it as a liability in that aspect.
Questions?
Well, my only concern is if we don't have that there and someone comes in and fracks and the water gets polluted, it's kind of hard to go back and pass any ordinance or something and say, "Well, it's against the law. You can't pollute our water and we're already drinking it."
Well, I don't know how soon we would expect an answer back from ODNR. We're requesting this week because it was done a week ago, and there's even a contact person that said if you haven't received a response in a week, which is tomorrow. I think one of our greatest fears is what might happen up north and the travel. So, I mean, we can only protect what we can protect legally here within the city. We would also contend, and we haven't gone too far down the road in terms of, you know, saying that different areas within the city at the least, that whether or not this is deemed a mining or extracting activity that's even allowed within the city.
And that's in the ordinance currently for mining and extraction.
And more land development and some past history.
And in terms of past history, we have spent a good chunk of change to protect our wellhead area. We just got the EPA litigation fund off our water bills, as everybody in the room knows. So therefore, to say that they would invalidate a wellhead protection ordinance, whole clause is highly probable. Again, you could always put this in and see if it flies, but I don't know if you really want to, you know, how far you want to go with that. It wouldn't get shot down at this level. It'd only be when it, when push comes to shove. And again, we've, I don't know how much we've spent total for everything for wellhead protection, but it's been quite a bit.
And it's ongoing. You have a plan of action every year.
Can I raise one more point? There's sort of something in between including those two sections and not. We have a section in here that deals with new facilities or expansions. And under the definition of facilities, we include recreation areas, industries, businesses, research facilities, mining and processing operations. We don't mention drilling in that definition. I'm wondering if that might be a spot to include drilling as the definition of a new facility.
I think that because.
That's on H2.
Manufacturing, processing, recycling of regulated substance as the principal activity is prohibited under 390105.
What I was pointing at was.
Number N?
H, under definitions.
Well, that's where I started.
Under the definition of facility. If we were to add the word drilling to the longer list of facilities.
You don't think the mining or processing operations would cover that? I don't know. And that's, I don't think that we've looked at that a lot, but we're willing to.
I would be okay with the drilling being added there because I think that then it's also comprehensive through the whole ordinance. It's mentioned other places, and so it's also mentioned there.
But if a developer said, "I want to drill my own gas well so I don't have to use Columbia gas," ODNR steps in and says, "Well, yeah, go ahead." Am I reading that wrong? So that wouldn't do, wouldn't do anything to prevent it?
Yes, there is the preemption, the preemption law of the state. It binds us in a lot of ways. However, that may not be forever. A couple of years, it may be gone. But I agree. I think that drilling should be included with the facility because there's other types of drilling. Drilling for, you know, gas, there's local drilling, there's different drilling besides fracking.
And what that does is it doesn't outright permit it or ban it. It says that it has to come under compliance and protection so that it's done under the supervision of, if it is done at all, it's done safely without dangerous quantities of prohibited materials.
And we know about it. Yes. Because it's not banning, it's not an outright ban on the spacing position or whatever else the city, the state says that we have to do.
Chris, if I may. Thanks. I think some of the things that I wrestle with as well is being elected official and in charge with the responsibility of making sure the welfare of our community is provided for and takes place. And, you know, I was looking at a few things here on the web and as well as some stuff I printed out before. Here's a couple of things from the Ohio Constitution. 1851, Article 1, Bill of Rights, powers reserved to the people. This enumeration of rights shall not be construed to impair or deny others retained by the people, and all powers not herein delegated remain with the people. Article 1, Bill of Rights, 1.19B, and again, these are dated back a while ago. The protection of the rights of Ohio's property owners and protection of Ohio's natural resources and the maintenance of the stability of Ohio's economy require the recognition and protection of property interests to groundwater, lakes, and watercourses. I just, again, I wrestle with this as an elected official. My responsibility to ensure the safety of our community and future people that live here and protection of our water supply. Obviously, I also have a responsibility fiduciary to make sure that we're not getting our butts nailed by a lawsuit and taxpayer money as well. So it's very challenging to want to be stuck in. But ultimately, I think the water trumps, the protection of the water, to me, outweighs any financial burden that we might encounter. Thank you.
So the general consensus, however, that is the general consensus of, I mean, we are discussing 16 and 17. What is the general consensus when we bring it up for discussion next week to pass or not pass? I mean, I think that on one hand, we can keep it in. The committee has not recommended, so we'd be going against the wellhead protection plan committee with keeping the 16 and 17, which is the drilling and storage.
I'm sorry. I just want to clarify that I would not say that that was indeed a recommendation from the wellhead protection team. It's, it's come from my review of the law director's office and what is defensible. And again, I want to state, I'm not speaking for the law director. He has indicated the city council can proceed as they see fit. He's just advising me on behalf of the administration what he views as defensible at this point in time. Not to confuse this anymore.
And I guess, I mean, obviously, having the discussion is important, and it also gives time for people in the community to send emails and phone calls to us to let us know where they stand on this or what's important to them as well. Something else to consider.
I'll stay right now. I want them left in. If legislation comes up to vote, that's what I want to see in there. This is the second worst consensus.
And I appreciate that Councilman Gosny pointed out, there are other improvements, enhancements, definition, cleanup language in here, separate from this particular subject regarding the fracking operations that should still proceed. So.
I think what you as chair would do would be put forth your best choice and then we let the council vote on it. We can't vote on it in this forum, so something has to come forward. And that's your
My purview.
Your responsibility.
My responsibility as the chairperson of this committee. So, okay. I will move forward. I will forward the new, what we decide. So, however, I, in regards to what people have said, I think that putting non-defensible items in is not really to our best benefit at this point.
Can I just say one thing? That's, with all due respect to the law director, and I'm sure he knows far more about, well, I know he knows far more about the law than I ever will. It's his opinion that it's indefensible. Well, there could be another lawyer out there that says it is defensible.
I think it's almost unfair to have this conversation without the law director present. All he was identifying to me was what, the existing language, and if I do the clarifications, that that's defensible just at face value. I don't want to speak for him, so I should stop.
Again, if we begin the process
You can always amend it, add it or take away.
Exactly. Yeah.
And there will be more opportunity for discussion next week when it's brought forward in the
Yes. And, however, I think I will bring it forward next week with majority of these changes because I think that it's really important to get the injection well changes in it. And we're talking about two lines, sixteen and seventeen, and so I think that we need to move ahead with this because however, however, things are going along, they're going along quite a pace, so I think that's rather important to get this in line. So, that's my, oh, so chairmanship sort of thing. It's the power of the chairmanship. So, any other comments? Okay. We have now a discussion on the AEP contract renewal, which I hand over to member Gosny since he knows a whole lot more now.
I do. And for the new members of the council, this has been something we've been working on for quite some time. And we had a twenty-five-year agreement that expired in last year. And this was a contract, a franchise agreement with American Electric Power, our subsidiary, to permit them to use public right-of-way in the city for maintenance and installation of their equipment and power lines. It is a pretty basic contract, pretty short, one pager maybe. And we put in temporary extension, actually twice already. The first was to include and discuss a number of items related to tree, tree maintenance in the city by the contractors that are used for the electric line clearance. And the second item was to include some other things in here that I felt were important for us to look at when we're negotiating a contract with public utility for electrics. I'm going to actually see if mayor's office has any comments that they want to make on this. We had a meeting, it was just a week ago, week and a half ago, with AEP as well as the mayor's office.
Yes, we do. We also have John Buck in the audience representing AEP. I told him to come along to test the waters and see what it sounds like. Conversation we had last week, of course, was that with David Wheeler and Mr. Buck, the contract, franchise contract we're looking at, they felt was bits and pieces of apples and oranges. They really didn't have much problem with the tree portion of it, and I think that was what I was hearing the most in the past five, six years that I've been in councils, the methodology of how trees get trimmed and the process. In the past, what we've done is we had, before the agreement lapsed, we had a discussion of the process and that wasn't codified in the agreement. In this section, we put it in Section Four, basically understood that it would be following the, you know, the fancy rules when it was a non-emergency maintenance, maintenance of lines. Subsequently, member Gosny added sections, I believe, Five and Six, which required an addition of a renewable energy portfolio, taking a percentage of any profits, I believe, or one percent of energy supplied to customers for renewable sources. They felt that was, the discussion was that's really not something that really shouldn't be in the mix of a right-of-way franchise. They felt that could be something discussed on a side. I kind of agree with them because really what we're talking about is actually a surcharge for the, it would cost the, anybody, the user more, where I understand it. And therefore, really what we're doing is adding a surcharge. We did go through the ballot initiative, if you remember, for the gas aggregation and the ability to actually do that with an opt-out clause, but we did not cover the electric portion of that. Another portion of it was, besides renewable energy funding, was the other one, the use of subleasing the city right-of-way poles that we have. And I believe that was another issue that they felt was not something that should actually be in the franchise agreement. As it stands now, we'll have to extend it at least another time if we do not reach an agreement with it. But again, the conversation I had with Mr. Wheeler earlier today is that all his staff and attorneys don't feel this is really something that should be in the agreement as it stands. I know your conversation was, how do we have leverage on them? But if you remember, the dialogue that took place last week was that we could always do this as a one-year, this particular form without Sections Five and Six.
Including the tree.
Include tree, but nothing else, yes. And if we feel that we need to negotiate the other portions as needed. Because again, I worry more about the fact that we're, and we've had this discussion about, you know, buying energy from organizations that use renewable credits. And in fact, you know, the conversation when we started four years ago was, you know, the more renewable credits you have, the more the cost goes up because you're buying green energy. And what is a comfortable balance at that time? And that was one of the sticking points, how much, what is, you know, it's a good thing to try, it's a good thing to work towards, but we really have to have consensus with all the people who are getting billed along the way and not see it as a tax.
And so, to provide a little bit of background about a couple of, about the energy items there, the renewable energy and the franchise fee that would fund, it was proposed to fund a local renewable energy program in the city. When I was handed this and looked at renewing it, I went to the district's US EPA office and found materials that they had written in two thousand nine that they contracted with the law office, Tech Law in Chicago. And what they recommend for cities, they're looking at making sure that they're paying attention to their environmental impact, they say, in consideration of the comments about, we can offer the following recommendation related to franchise agreements with utilities. And this is the most forward thinking in the country when it comes to franchise agreements. The Ann Arbor franchise agreement, which includes both the items that I mentioned, offers what can be considered best practice within the states encompassed by Region Five, which is the US EPA district. So they're referring to this type of a franchise agreement as the best practice, and any efforts to modernize municipal franchise agreements should minimally incorporate provisions of that type of a franchise agreement. And so that's what I was looking to do. It's, I'm not surprised that there's a good amount of resistance to this. And from many piece perspectives, they want to maintain the traditional franchise agreement that has, says almost nothing in it. My view is that we're granting them a privilege to use our public property and that we should be able to negotiate something in return. And if we care about what energy is used in the city, that we have a right to include provisions such as, will they use any renewable energy in providing it to the city? And if we seek to charge a franchise agreement, which is done in some states, or in some other cities in other states, including AEP has, in Texas, they are paid franchise, they pay franchise agreements to some cities. If we make the decision as a city council to, and if AEP could be agreeable to it, to have a franchise fee, that would indeed be paid for by the residents' families. It would be added on to everyone's utility bill as a set percentage. It's the same way that the state does it for their energy programs, but it would be a local version of that. So that's the background, I think, probably what the mayor said in terms of putting an agreement in place now that includes the tree section for a certain amount of time is probably the best in having that in place. You mentioned maybe one year. And then see if, working with AEP, I know I asked for a written response to some of these items from them. I haven't received that yet, but I'm sure that it will be coming.
I believe they're working on it. Again, this was a conversation because we, they were aware that this was going to be a meeting on this. Mr. Wheeler said he has been talking to his staff, attorneys, et cetera. Again, really, you know, he did say, you know, they could always buy green energy. We could, they could make an agreement, they're perfect. Again, you and I both know that to do that, you're really buying it on the market and it's usually pricier. So what we'd be doing is locking in everybody's electric bills at least to do this.
And then we have boulders falling off of Ford Street, possibly because of the warm climate that we have this winter. So I think we need to wait. I didn't mean to
As long as those lines, AEP did indeed respond and worked all night and got the electric going and, you know, security.
As did our city workers that ensured the water line was fixed and
Columbia gas would come the next day if they got it.
So, I guess I would say that
That's why they're regulated.
For me, my push is to have what the HAs call best practices. And for us to have, this is the only strength we have, I think, with a utility like that is that we're negotiating what is going to be a long-term contract with them. Eventually, whether it's, you know, whether it's a five-year contract that renews or whatever, what we negotiate now will be in place for many years to come. And I view this as an opportunity to really make a change. We can, we can talk about, if it gets to the point where it's a possibility, we can discuss, you know, what's an acceptable marginal increase in electricity costs, one percent, two percent? Is there something the community would be in favor of, you know, in terms of getting cleaner electricity for a marginal increase in costs? So I think, I think it's a good point. You know, we can't convert completely to solar or any other renewable energy now because the cost is too high, but to make steps in that direction, I think, is important.
Again, if I was going to be looking at this as a total picture of what we do and consume as a city, and again, this is just the city bills, what I want to see is eventually to strive towards getting, getting out of the unmeted light, streetlight market. Right now, we have to pay a chunk of money for that. But again, this falls under, you know, the discussion we had last week is the technology's not there. It's a moving target. We have Court Street with compact fluorescent bulbs right now. We have traffic lights with LEDs, but I don't know if any of you bought an LED lamp bulb lately at fifty, forty bucks a shot, you know? And it's, you know, it's not where it's supposed to be. I mean, hopefully it'll get better as time goes on, but to say, let's swap out everything we have on the street, to me, it's a conservation issue right now to work on and have a conversation with AEP about our streetlights and getting that, which means a commitment from either from our side or their side to do this.
And then we actually, we do have a separate contract with AEP regarding our streetlights.
Yes, but, yeah.
But you're right, conservation is important.
Okay.
What I would prefer, if we do have a temporary form, is that it not be perpetually renewing, which is something that the gentleman from AEP, Mr. Wheeler, he mentioned one that they've had renewing each year for a hundred years.
But with a drop-dead date. I mean, basically
What I don't want is perpetual renewal that doesn't give any opportunity to include any of these sort of progressive elements in terms of our contracts.
So you would, okay, so you want to see a time limit rather than renewable? Again, he's saying renewable with the idea that we have stopped, you know, sunset on it whenever we felt like we could say, okay, we renewed it for X amount of years, we want to renegotiate this and start over again. But you'd rather have a definite time.
I would.
Okay. The next question is what time would you be thinking of?
Let's, I'll come flexible there.
So are you authorizing us or allowing us to proceed with negotiating a time limit new franchise agreement that addresses the trees with AEP prior to the expiration of the extension?
I'm suggesting a temporary agreement in place so that we are not left without agreement. And if we can get the trees in there now, let's do that. Is that the answer?
I'm going to add tennis shoes too.
Yeah, we did talk about tennis shoes. We could just find somebody who wants all those tennis shoes, you know, because we'll have to cut the strings and all that.
Just give them two good ones.
Did you want to add anything, John? No?
I just appreciate the opportunity to meet about this and discuss these things. They're all very important.
Okay, do you want to step up here? If you want to say anything, say it to the mic and introduce yourself just for, you've been here, but mostly you've seen John Buck.
I think a lot of council members are new.
Okay, well, introduce yourself and
Last time. Yeah, Dave Wheeler, he referred to as my boss, the general manager for AEP Ohio out of Canton. And of course, with, you know, a lot of deregulation and things going on right now, it's a kind of a different industry than what it used to be. The franchise agreement really is a distribution document as opposed to a generation document. So, as we split the company up in the future, that's kind of a, kind of a key issue, I think, that's involved with this process too. And, you know, we've mentioned that we were okay with the one addition that we had back, I think it was July now, something like that. It sounds like that's what we're agreeing to do for perhaps next year. We can get in discussion about some of these other things and certainly not wait six months or eight months to start that process, but start it much sooner and almost immediate.
Any questions for Mr. Buck?
I have one. You're saying that under the current deregulation climate, you're being split into the generation side and a distribution side. Right now, we're negotiating with both together, correct? I mean, generation and distribution is still the same.
Right, the generation aspect, we're going to have less and less control of going forward. And whereas we're really part of the distribution company as it is now. So, yeah, that's going to add a little bit more confusion if you will, the whole
What I'm wondering is, say, in five years, when the split is complete and you like to bring up your proposal about clean, green energy generation, but we're dealing with the distribution side and they say, well, you know, guys, we're, we just deal with distribution, we don't have anything to do with generating power. You should have talked to us five years ago. Am I misinterpreting that?
No, I think that's true. I think going forward
Still kind of moot, isn't it?
Going forward, you know, being able to collect those dollars may be an issue if customers are not AEP customers in particular, you know, they may or will not be. That's something to consider going forward, certainly.
So shorter-term contracts would be a wiser, certainly not locking into something for a long period of time.
Well, the discussions are ongoing now, even, you know, as we, as we talk with the PUCO and there's rulings that are expected going forward and how that's going to pan out is probably still a question as well.
I just need to go on record here about the franchise, the proposed fee for a franchise agreement that I'm suggesting. That's, I view it as the cost of providing electricity to the city for AEP or running the distribution system, just like the franchise fees that exist in other cities across the country. Just as you have to pay for the coal or the windmills, whatever is being used to generate power, this is another cost of doing business in some places as a franchise fee. And so in our discussion, it was moved away from that in terms of trying to And so in our discussion, it was moved away from that in terms of trying to separate the generation from the distribution. The distribution is what the franchise fee is for, for using our public right-of-way to using public property in the city in order for the private company to provide services in the city. And so that's, I don't view it as dependent on generation or splitting up companies. I believe the distribution part would still be installing, running, clearing, fixing lines in the city. And so if there's a franchise fee, it's associated, maybe it would be calculated differently, but I think it would still apply just as in any other case.
We'd certainly discuss that forward, certainly.
There you have it. Anything else, no? Okay, thanks. So we'll be trying to put that together then with the tree component. That's the bottom line. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Is there anything else? Hello? I have no missed one there. Do you as all of us have any missed one of these?
Not that we can think of anything, no.
I'm holding one back for committee of the whole.
When we were done with planning and development committee.
And we'll move it to committee of the whole. I'm going to let Governor Gosny start this going, the discussion about fluoridation. And I think she wants to talk about afterwards, so.
Thank you. So we heard a couple weeks ago from Dr. Gaskell and a lady from the university here on issue of water fluoridation. We've been hearing from other folks for quite a while. I was put in touch with a dentist from Chillicothe, Dr. Ball, who had an interest in coming to city council to speak from his perspective and his knowledge and expertise on the issue for a few moments. And so he was invited here tonight. Dr. Ball, if you'd like to come up, you can, you're welcome to sit or you can stand up the microphone here to present to us. That'd be just fine. And I believe he has some handouts for members as well. Thanks, John. So as I mentioned, he's a dentist in Chillicothe and gave up a little bit of, or set aside a little bit of his time tonight where he usually meets with clients in the evenings on Mondays to come speak to us, so please share your thoughts with us.
David Ball, I'm a general dentist in Chillicothe, Ohio. Normally, I communicate one-on-one with patients, so this is a little new for me. So I did feel passionate enough about it to, that I think the information needs to get out there. And I'm sure you've heard a lot of debate on this. And I think you're going to find this issue's not going to go away. It's going to keep coming up and coming up and coming up. I've just got a story. In 95, I took my three boys to the Chillicothe Water Plant. And we went through a tour there and I was so impressed, I went in and I looked at this, this water coming out of the ground and I thought, it's just so clean and pristine. And I thought, I told my kids and I asked the employees there and I said, is it that clean when it's coming out from the wells? And they said, yes. The only thing we have to do is it's very hard because it's raw water, so we have to put, we have to, you know, soften it or it just eats up the pipes. And then we have to put a lot of chlorine in it because, again, we've got an old infrastructure, old pipes that gets dirty on the way to your house. I mean, it's, it's, those are things that, just practical things that have to be done. And then he showed me the, basically the dispenser of the hydrofluocyanic acid and just kind of a dripping of that in to make one part per million of the fluoride. I guess that was a little concerning. I, I'm a dentist, I'm supposed to, you know, be quote, a fluoride fanatic. I, a topical use, I think, I see the benefits, I see it work to inoculate, I guess, a whole community. That concerns me. It is a toxin. I know it's a small amount. I guess I look at some of the studies, I even went to the, there's a 72-page report by the ADA that goes into great detail on different aspects of fluoridation, water fluoridation, why it's so good. What I got from that was ingested fluoride gets in the enamel from a zero to six. So these, the theory was, you know, as the teeth are developing, this fluoride is getting in the enamel, making it more resistant to decay. But now we're seeing that we don't want to give this to babies from zero to six months, no fluoride, because it's harmful. And then we've reduced the amount to younger kids too. So I wonder about, you know, we're trying to, we've got a kind of a narrow range of people we're trying to benefit, but I don't see the systemic or ingestion of fluoride, how it's going to help adults. Topical fluoride is more useful for that, for that means. I just don't, I know the ADA site said that by ingesting the fluoride, it comes out of the saliva to protect the teeth. I wasn't taught that. We were taught that it gets incorporated into the enamel of the teeth. What I do see is, the more I read about fluoride, is it, it's really good at killing things. It's used in so many different things, and I'm sure you've heard all this, but drugs, any kind of drug, diflucan, I mean, there's, there's a patient that came in with, on chemotherapy and she had a bag next to her and she said, gee, they say to stay away from it. And I said, I said, gee, what are you taking? And she said it was fluorocel, which is chemotherapy, chemotherapy that's a fluoride-based chemotherapy. Diflucan kills yeast. I mean, it's, it's usually added to kill something. I guess that concerns me, especially when I'm drinking my water. So like I pointed out, I got into this, I use reverse osmosis on my own water, I try my best to take care of things, but I, you know, it's kind of nice to take my kids out to Wendy's or something and get a tea or something, but I buy a bottle of water. I guess I like to have the choice that if I want to, it just seems like there isn't a choice. It's, I guess at this point, I, I mean, I could go on and on. I guess I'd like to know what your concerns and questions might be. Because I know this is a, I don't know if it's called volatile, it's just an issue that keeps coming up.
Do council members have any questions about, questions right now? One question I have, as you mentioned infants, it's not suggested that they receive fluoride. And this came up in our previous discussion, the question of what if their formula is being prepared with public drinking water? And I guess was, this was a recent thing according to what I found. Can you expand on that at all?
Well, they're, since a formula, a baby's liquid diet, you're drinking, that's all their nutrition is coming from the bottle. And they're saying fluorosis, I guess I, you know, teeth fluorosis, but I guess I see that if you're, if the teeth are, if there's fluorosis in the teeth, you're going to have that of the bone. I mean, there's, there's different things too, so. And then when, when is that child, you know, six months, when are they mature enough to handle, to handle that, I guess? I know that there's natural fluoridation. I mean, it's in the water, but that is a very different compound. And I think we've been as a, for thousands of years, we've been exposed to that. I think it's very ironic that human breast milk has .007 parts per million fluoride. Now, that means if the mother ingests fluoride, let's say at two, four, five, six parts per million, that breast milk is still going to be .007. Now, it just seems to me that the body, the mother, is trying to protect the baby. And if they're exposed to that fluoride, why would it do that? If it's a nutrient and it's so good for that baby, why wouldn't it come out in the breast milk? So I mean, I just have questions. I have concerns about this. And I guess I kind of look at this as a film, if, maybe this is the way it's going to be. Maybe every, all the water supply is going to be fluorinated or put forward, fluoridation. I'm concerned about that. So I don't know if I answered your question.
You did, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Dr. Ball, have you seen any more conversations at dental meetings you go to? Is this a topic that's coming up more and more? You said you've been a dentist for 32 years. Are you hearing more about the concerns? Is it out there in your profession? Because, you know, we hear, of course, that dentists know people who have had fluoride in their water. That's what they say, whether it's scientific or not, I don't know, but that's what they say. That's what you hear. So what, from a professional point of view in your profession, what are you hearing? Is this being discussed?
Well, usually they look at me like I'm kind of nuts and say, you know, this is what we were taught. And I guess in dental school, that there was not two sides. There was never the other side. There was always, this is truth, this is what we do. How great fluoridation was, how great mercury fillings were, how all these things were so wonderful. And that we weren't supposed to question that. And I see that mentality and quite frankly, kind of an apathy. One part per million, that's just such a small little amount, what the heck? You know, we put, toothpaste has a thousand parts per million in it. If you do a fluoride treatment in an office, that's 5,000, maybe 10,000 parts per million. I remember in high school, I did one of those fluoride treatments and the hygienist didn't understand. She said, oh, go ahead and swallow it, it's good for you. Well, I did, and I tell you, I was sick for at least a couple of days. And it, that's a reaction to a poison. I don't know where's that cutoff that makes it safe. I mean, I don't know. If it's going to accumulate in the bone, I'm just concerned. And I, and the industrial, kind of the industrial waste that's used in fluoridation is not a pure fluoride. And I'm sure you've heard that too, but.
So the Dr. Connets and you, for instance, as our local person here who has concerns, there are just not many of you out there speaking out about this.
There's no visible, and there's so many things like this, it's not like a smoking, you can't tell what causes these things. But I guess what I've looked at is it's, it's an accumulation. And everybody here has a different threshold for toxins. And there comes a point in time when that person goes over their threshold. It could be from mercury, it could be from fluoride, it could be from different things that we're exposed to. So I guess I'm kind of looking, where can I reduce that burden? Where can I take some of those toxins out? And, you know, the air I breathe is pretty important, the water's pretty important too. I can't live without it. I don't know.
Yes.
Oh. What's the toxic threshold of iodine?
I honestly don't know.
Do you use table salt? You're consuming iodine every day.
I agree with that.
How about vitamin D?
Yes. But I've never seen vitamin D in a pesticide or rat poison. And I've never seen iodine in rat poison or a pesticide.
Well, iodine's always been marked as a poison. My grandmother's house had a big old skull and crossbones iron.
It's a needed nutrient. It's a needed nutrient.
So is iron?
Yes. But have you ever seen, is fluoride a needed nutrient? I can't, I can't see that.
The body would absorb it if it needs it. And apparently in places where fluoride's naturally in the water, it does. So the body takes what it wants and disposes of the rest. Your example is the mother's milk. She consumes seven parts per million fluoride. The baby only gets a small fraction of that, the rest of it's excreted somewhere. I mean, if we started analyzing stool samples, I'm sure we'd find a lot of fluoride in there and other waste products. I mean, well, which brings up, has anybody done a study on that? See what the excretion rate of fluoride is in the bottom?
Supposedly it comes out of the urine.
Could be.
It comes out of the urine and goes in the bone. Now, that's according to the ADA.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah. Well, since this topic has come up, I've had local dentists come up to me and tell me that they remember back before there was fluoride in water, they had rotten teeth, they did a lot of cavity work. Now they're fluoride in water, all they do now is molars, you know, extracting them so kids have perfect smiles and they look like supermodels anymore, and they do almost nothing in terms of repair of cavities or anything. I mean, my own daughter, you know, she, I think she's had one cavity in her whole life. Everything else was like braces and that cost a fortune. I couldn't afford cavities. Now me, I came from a carther, you know, well water, pure stuff. They had to chlorinate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're drinking chlorine, even with I O, some chlorine gets through. But, oh, my mouth was a mess. I just had cavities everywhere. So did everybody I knew. I mean, I'm just not bashing about, it had nothing to do with income, whether it's poor or rich, but just had rotten teeth, you know, just something you grow with. My dad lost all his teeth by the time he was 40. I mean, every one of them. One day he went to the dentist and he came back with no teeth at all. But he was from Kentucky originally. You know? No fluoride down there, you know? Comes up to Ohio, still no fluoride. We didn't have any. So I really don't know what the debate is. I mean, to me, you know, when I first heard about the fluoride debate, it was in Dr. Strangelove, the movie, 1964.
Yes.
You know? The reason World War III got started is the Russians are fluoridating our water, they're sat, you know, and purifying our precious polyfluids. You know, the John Birch Society pushed that thing for years just to get people to like communism.
Thank you. Perhaps it's color TV that improved the quality of the teeth over those years because that was also another thing that came on there.
Color TV? It could be. We didn't have color TV.
I apologize.
I will say fluoride, yes. I'm one of those people. I have, every tooth in my head was, had fillings when I was a kid. I've lost teeth, I've, maybe that's why I became a dentist, I don't know. But I did have some dietary habits. I had fasted flakes with sugar on it. So I mean, maybe that was part of it too. They didn't, you know, I was a little hyperactive kid and I'm sitting here eating all this sugar. I'm sure that had an effect. But I guess what I'm looking at now is, I looked at a little surgeon's office and he pulls a lot of teeth. And I see 20-year-olds and 25-year-olds and they're pulling every tooth in their head decay. So, we've got all this fluoride, and yet we still have issues, we still have problems. And I guess I, there was a tremendous amount of fluoride out there, it's everywhere. I mean, really everywhere, every material I use, I, I look in, it's got fluoride in it. Every, we get it in our water, we get it in our toothpaste, we get it in, I mean, anything you drink. Any kind of processed foods has it. If you get, if you have any kind of fruit, fluoride-based pesticides, you're gonna get it in your, your juices. So I guess, what I guess I'm saying is, okay, it's one part per million, and it's given indiscriminately to everybody. Why don't we still, I'm not saying, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take away people's choice. I'm not gonna say, if you don't want, if you want fluoride, you can have it. Buy a tube of toothpaste, it's dirt cheap. Two, three bucks for a tube of fluoride toothpaste, and you're getting a thousand, fifteen hundred parts per million fluoride in that. Now, I don't bet you, but it's pretty hard, you're gonna ingest a little of that. I mean, I'd be surprised if you didn't, especially kids. And I'm, I'm a little concerned with that, if you give that to a little three or four-year-old and tell him go in and brush his teeth. Guarantee he's gonna swallow it. So, are we gonna get too much? So I guess I'm just dialing it down, one part per million. You're still gonna get thousands of parts per million if you want to, and these people will. But that's a choice. I choose not to have a fluoride toothpaste. But if somebody doesn't want it in their water, I don't know, everybody can afford a distiller and reverse osmosis.
No, but you have a lot of people that are very low income, and that's three dollars for that tube of toothpaste. I mean, that's three bucks. You know, when you're living on food stamps, you get a hundred twenty-seven dollars a month. You gotta make some hard choices. Do I get the pound of baloney, or do I get the tube of toothpaste?
Even if you fluoridate the dickens out everything, if they don't brush their teeth, that's, all those teeth we pull are people that come in and do not care for themselves. And that's a choice, okay? That's a choice they make. They say, you know, hey, I don't wanna brush these. Mom's had dentures, dad's had dentures, I'm gonna have dentures.
So you're saying people in poverty make it?
Not all, no, 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 not.
Not all, but.
Of course not, but, I mean, I'm talking about.
I'm done.
Dr. Ball, I, I just had a couple of questions, and you've been practicing since seventy-eight. And that was probably back when sodium fluoride was used, if it was used in the water supplies, and now it's morphed its way through petrochemical plants into the hydroxyl fluoride, which is an interesting variant from what was originally used in the water supplies. And I'm just curious, this may be an unanswerable question, but I'm, I'm curious as to whether in your thirty-some years of practicing, and I'm assuming Chillicothe's had fluoridation for a while, and that's where you practice all this time?
The dentist that I brought to practice, my practice from, was instrumental in getting fluoridation in Chillicothe.
I'm, I'm just curious if you've seen any change over time, in your practice anyway, in fluorosis? As the systems have moved, and I don't even know if you're aware, but you know, if it's, it's moved from sodium fluoride to other, you know, variations of a fluoride compound to what is now hydroxyl fluoride, whether you've seen a change in, in the appearance of individuals' teeth? Again, it's hard to say, I suppose, because of use and so on and so forth, but.
I, I see, some of the severe cases that I've seen have actually come from an area that's, it's got a high natural content of, it's Clarksburg. They'll have two, three, four parts per million in their natural water, and they come in with brown teeth. And they're, they're soft and they're chalky. The mild version would be a white speck, white spots on the teeth. So, do I see more of it? Yeah, I do.
The other question I had was, had to do, I mean, being a new father to twins, and I'm always concerned about them. And one about tooth development, but a long time since I've had biology and anatomy at that level, and looking at neonatology, but with tooth development for a, a small child, for an infant, you know, the baby teeth are gonna come in first, and then their permanent teeth are gonna come in later. Is it claimed that the fluoride is affecting the permanent teeth in newborn at that point? Do they even have permanent teeth at that point? My concern being, should, should infants be given fluoride, period?
Well, the ADA stance is no, absolutely not. From zero to six months, no. No fluoride. I mean, that's right in their literature, it was on their website. Recommendation was no fluoride, no supplementation, no nothing. Six months to, it was like half that. I mean, not one part per million, but point, point five. So, they're kinda gradually, you know, until they're six or seven, and then it's, I don't know what the age was exactly, when it goes to one part per million. That answer drew.
It, it does, thank you.
But the teeth, basically, the enamel of permanent teeth too is pretty much done by age six.
Developed.
Developed. So, that's when the fluoride's supposed to get incorporated in the enamel. Now, what I've always known is after that period of six years, as a matter of the kid drinks fluoride, fluoride, there's no more that can be incorporated into the teeth. Then you go to your topical, well, obviously around six, seven, you know, the kids are getting their permanent teeth in. Then you go to your topical. Then your, like, and your toothpaste and things like that. The ADA is even recommending that kids under two not, not use toothpaste. Or be very, very careful. I mean, that's why it has that ring on the tube. You know, don't swallow it, be really careful of this stuff. So, I would watch your kids. I mean, cause they, they haven't developed their swallowing reflex really. I, I watch my kids, you know, I tell them to spit it out, and they go, and then spit. I mean, they swallow first and then they spit. So, what do you do? So, so basically, you're not gonna be brushing your kid's teeth with a fluoride toothpaste. And if you do, they're getting a boatload of fluoride. So, I, do we need, do we need to, yeah, I, I guess I, I wondered, do you need to put in the water?
My concern is, do we need to put this particular type of fluoride in, in water? Which is what troubles me. I'm looking, again, at a chemical that comes, comes from a petrochemical plant, hydroxyl fluoride for that matter, and it's, as opposed to a sodium fluoride, or naturally occurring fluoride, or fluoride from my toothpaste, or whatever. But again, my concern is for small children where, you know, a family may have no choice but to use fluoridated water to mix with fluoride, with the formula. That's, to me, is troubling.
Well, pharmaceutical grade fluoride, if you really wanted to put that in the water, and take out the imperiorities and things like that, you wouldn't do it. Too expensive, way too expensive. I'd say three, four times. I actually went to the treatment plant and asked, we're paying, and I thought this was kinda ironic. We buy twenty-two tons of fluoride for our water, and we're paying, last year, we were paying seventeen thousand for that. It's kinda ironic that this year we're paying thirteen thousand. They reduced the price. And I thought, that's interesting, I wonder why. Well, we're getting a little, you know, hey, look, we're, we're able to get rid of this waste pretty, pretty economically. In fact, we're actually getting paid for it. If communities start to say, you know, hmm, I don't think we need this anymore, what are we gonna do with this stuff? EPA says we can't dump it in the ocean, it's too toxic. Now, the ocean already has two or three parts per million anyway. I mean, it's, it's naturally got fluoride in it. But they're saying, don't put this stuff in the ocean, ocean's pretty big. I mean, I would think that would dilute down to, but they, EPA says absolutely not. And they don't want it in the, they don't want you to bury it, they don't want you to put it in the ground. Cause it goes into the water supply, too concentrated. So, I, I don't know what your bill for your fluoride is, but you may notice some reductions. And this isn't, the reason I say this isn't gonna die, Proposition sixty-five, they're already looking at this in California as a possible carcinogen, and if it gets on that list, you're gonna see things change in a big way. I don't know if it'll happen. Supposedly New York's doing something too, I don't know what exactly, but.
Other questions? I just wanted to mention one thing, and that's, remember Reizner? From my research, fifty percent of the fluoride that's taken into the body is kept, and the other fifty percent is excreted, given sort of a normal exposure. As you mentioned, it goes to the bones and the teeth, goes to the.
It goes to calcified, it goes to hard structure. Goes to bone or something like that, yeah.
The other thing, someone mentioned something about, you know, the, the impact it's having on cavities, I think. The largest, so cavities have gone down, and I have, I can show this to anyone that's interested, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in every western country in the world, every westernized country, they've gone down similar rates. If you superimpose cavity rates and fluoridation on that graph, you don't detect a difference between the fluoridated countries and the not fluoridated, it's just, there's, there's no way to pick out the fluoridated ones. So in terms of general public health, it's indistinguishable. The largest study in the United States ever done was done in the late eighties. It was federally funded, federally performed, and they looked at thousands and thousands of children. And what they found was, they, they did find a difference when they, when they looked at the data a certain way. The difference they found was of questionable clinical significance because it was so small. And this was looking at kids all across the country. The effect of fluoridated water, topical fluoride, as you're saying, is a different thing. So they found, there are a hundred and twenty surfaces in the teeth, I believe, is that, something like that?
Quite a few.
They found a difference of half of one tooth surface in fluoridated communities was saved versus, per, per child versus non-fluoridated. And that difference disappeared if you got rid of two states without lying data points. And so it is, in more recent years, it is of questionable effectiveness in terms of the actual body of, of literature out there. And I'm, I'm speaking only of peer-reviewed scientific literature. One last point, and I'll, I'll stop here. There are some organizations that are, have taken positions against it, some professional organizations. One is the Environmental Working Group, which I was looking at for fracking information, actually. It's an outfit out of Washington DC. And they actually petitioned to have fluoride pesticides banned in this country, which was something that was, they were successful at, and that's either underway last year or, or underway this year. But they, they've come out against it as, as a nonprofit, five oh one, three, something or other, that works nationwide on these, the public health, on behalf of public health. And a second group is the International Academy of Oral Medicine and Toxicology. Have you heard of that group?
Yes.
Do you know anything about it? Someone sent this to me, and it's a, it's a group of dentists worldwide, I believe.
Yes, well, yeah, they're, they're mainly Canada, United States.
Oral health, okay. And so this is a professional organization of dentists that has, has a position statement that they don't find it necessary or helpful, so just wanted to share that.
Dr. Ball, thank you for coming. We don't, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
No, just, we've, we've talked about this for many, 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 many committee, committee meetings, and.
Actually, it weren't committee meetings, they were, they were at.
Council meetings.
They were council meetings, right.
I think that if this is such a concern, that something needs to be brought forward legislatively. Because we are a legislative body, we need, we're not like, just a forum for education. We need either to decide what to do, bring something forward, and, you know, if people want to do an educational forum, they should produce it on the side. We've spent a lot of time and energy on this, and we need to do something. Somebody needs to produce something legislatively, or we need to move on. Because this is, every week we are having something, and it's not really going anywhere. And I think that people are getting, I think members, from my experience, talking to members on council, people are getting frustrated. So, I will say, that's seeing how, you know, I think that we need to put something forward, or, you know, get people to do, I think that it's great to have education, have an educational forum at the, at the university, you know, especially, I'm very concerned if there is some kind of thing on the ballot. We cannot be seen as producing, you know, the fluoride, the fluoride show every week. So, I think we need to look at that, and really think about what we're doing.
Thank you. Service Safety Director, you have something?
Well, I guess I'll start being the, what may be viewed initially as bad news. We had our Oxbow Bridge bid opening, and indeed.
I'm sorry, I didn't read.
We had the Oxbow Bridge bid opening, and it came in over, and there were a couple different other complications in terms of the way the bid, the bid was formatted and what have you. So, after consultation with the city engineers, both Jessica and Andy, and with the design engineer from the Oxbow, what it looks like we're going to attempt to do is to rebid it this year, sell it prior to June thirtieth, so we meet ODOT's fiscal year, that we're holding twenty-five percent of the municipal bridge credit for the state of Ohio funds, and allow the longer extension period, as opposed to trying to do this summer from the first summer ever, a switch from quarters to semesters, allowing it to be next summer, which would be, of course, oh, it's second week of May all the way into August. It's a lot more detailed than that, we'll be coming back for more information, additional legislation. But we've made that decision that that looks like our best way to proceed.
So it won't be done this year? Or may I get to experience the Oxbow this year?
I, I think it makes more, from what we've learned at the, in talking with the engineers. I, I think the university has as well, and, and part of the problem was, is that this is an unusual year where we're switching from quarters to semesters, and there's only a seventy-three day window.
Counting Sundays.
Is that it? It's Saturdays and Sundays too? And so that's part of what drove the, the cost up on the, on the estimate. So, I think from what I'm hearing, you know, we're firmly committed to this, as is the university in cooperating in any way that they, they can. And we'll have those things happen, the upgrades, but it will likely be like next year. And what we can purchase this year, once we have the bids, we will do so, so that we minimize the costs that might increase because of inflation.
Items such as steel or? What, in terms of timelines, seventy-three days for this year, but what's the big difference next year?
Well, okay, this year is, basically we're switching from quarters, so that quarter will go to June.
Yeah.
And, and then it'll start, actually, in August for the semester. Next year, twenty thirteen, we're gonna.
So we'll, so we'll end the quarter, we'll end the semester next year by early May.
So we'll have a longer summer next year.
How many days?
Almost thirty, about thirty. Which is significant with, in terms of this. In addition, as we look at those restrictions, not only a full closure, but then if additional time is needed, we'll be planning.
So we get to suffer longer.
Well, that's also the.
That's the good news?
We're also having a conversation with us, we're talking about tearing up part of Union Street this year, right? For the oil lines that you've been talking about. So that we'd have that part uptown hindered as well. And again, I think there's also reformatting the bid a little bit, so we can get a better number, handle on the numbers in terms of utilities and art, and.
How much more over did it come? What was the sticker shot?
We were approved for three point one, and the bid came in at three point five. We were four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over. And that would be the city's responsibility, a hundred percent match.
Which was actually greater when you factor in that they built in the disincentive meeting, they weren't going to be, need it, five hundred and sixty thousand additional dollars this year.
So we can't really afford this larger bid, is, is the.
So, we can't really afford this larger bid, is, is the bottom line?
Well, yeah, I kind of got that, yeah.
And we're bringing up the art as an alternate. And I, we had a brief conversation with Bob Winters of AMAC, also recognizes that, the idea of public art, it didn't necessarily have to be attached to that project or location, as we were looking at wastewater treatment plant.
So, there's more to come about this, but, but not destruction immediately. Not, no destruction of, it's not a new bridge.
It's not gonna be blown up.
No.
No.
I want to think of blocking it up. I want to think of blocking it up.
This was the bad news, what was the good news?
Oh, well, the good news would be, I felt that we'll actually have a better timeline, that this will be constructed more carefully, you know, with identifying the costs that would be associated with the university for theirs and for the city.
That is good news.
Yeah, you should go in the poll.
I'm trying to view this as an opportunity, and I do apologize that we've been saying all along, we're gonna be doing it this year, this year, but the reality is such that it looks like we need that longer time.
Yeah, I just want to add, I, I agree with everything you're saying, 'cause I keep thinking too, as, you know, an academician, that the confusion that's gonna be going on this summer anyway, with the switch to semesters, and to, again, not have to have this squeezed into such a short period of time, which is something that has always bothered me, thinking that this is the shortest summer that we're ever gonna have. It won't ever be like this again. And to buy, to buy that extra 30 days back again is huge, for cost and, again, you know, just in, in terms of work performance. It's not having a bunch of people out there, you know, hustling so fast that errors can occur and so on and so forth. So, I just think this is very prudent.
But we don't want to lose the bridge money, which is why we're trying to get it rolling.
Really, I understand that.
Couple of other things I want to just mention. One is that there has been a change in the certification date, if I understand correctly, the date?
I believe they email council members.
Everybody knows that? Okay, so it's the 29th and not the 28th?
Yeah, the hours have changed a little bit, from Sunday instead of Saturday.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And just to mention, an announcement format, the Grand Drive Family Housing ribbon cutting will be March 28th. That's this week, just so you know. I think it starts at 11:00. So, you're welcome to come.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.